Okay. All right, good morning, everyone. We are called to order the today's Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, we're going to first call to order the Board of Commissioners meetings to handle a recognition for some children. So, Mr. Clerk, if we can call to order the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, and we do have the copy of the Open Meetings Act on the wall.
Oh, sorry, yes, sorry. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the north wall of the chamber and an automatic defibrillator is here in the building in case there is a health matter. So, Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Mike Boyle is absent. Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
And Mr. Chair?
Here. We're going to move to item, where are we at? Item three, under Recognizations and Proclamations, and Letter B, a resolution recognizing Elizabeth Harding, Madeline De Prima, and Gillian Snow of the Westside High School's DECA Club for their efforts to raise suicide awareness among young people. Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. So, first, just want to, of course, point out that we're in the middle of a pandemic, and the collateral damage that we're seeing here is a mental health crisis. This especially hits kids and adolescents hard. They're trying to find their way, and their socialization is really blunted at this point. So, any effort made by kids to do that should be recognized. There are several programs at different schools around town, around the state, to address this, and one in particular is the DECA program at Westside High School. So, whenever there is a program created by kids, for kids, I think it has a huge impact. They know the needs, they're living this, and as adults, we crave ideas from youth. You are our future, your actions matter, and you are the leaders, you're the ones that are making decisions now that can make us a positive community in the future. So, with that, I present to the Board of Commissioners a resolution, whereas Elizabeth Harding, Madeline De Prima, and Gillian Snow, who are seniors at Westside High School and members of the school's DECA club, are raising suicide awareness among young people, and whereas the students chose to focus on suicide prevention for their DECA chapter project as a result of rising mental health issues and suicide rates amidst the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas the project also had a very personal meeting for the school's community as it experienced the loss of former Westside High School student Joe Fair to suicide in 2018, who happened to be a good friend of my cousin Jake Kent, whereas Joe Fair's parents, Debbie and Doug Fair, spoke to Westside High School students as part of the DECA project in an effort to de-stigmatize mental illness and encourage students to seek help if they need it, and whereas the project also included a virtual suicide awareness walk in January, and from this, the students have raised more than $6,000 from donors, a GoFundMe page, and virtual walk signup fee, which they plan to donate to a suicide awareness prevention organization on behalf of the Fair family, and whereas the students want their project to start an important conversation and encourage people to reach out to others who just seem down or might be having a bad day. So, now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes Elizabeth Harding, Madeline De Prima, and Gillian Snow of Westside High School for their important efforts to raise suicide awareness among young people in Douglas County, Nebraska.
Does that motion?
Could I have a motion, please?
No, okay. Motion from Commissioner Friends, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Boyle. Any discussion? Any, do we have any other students? My understanding is we may have had some of the class online?
Yep.
You all want to opportunity?
Yeah.
Okay. It's your opportunity if you want to say anything.
Okay. This project has been really beneficial for us in so many ways, and it started as just our DECA project, but it immediately turned into so much more. The three of us have become so much more informed on the importance of suicide awareness and how just one person could save a life. We've started taking action by starting an open conversation on suicide and normalizing the talk about mental health. A brain injury is just as important as a physical injury, and we need to take care of our brains, and so through this project, we hope that others will follow us and help to fight against suicide.
Right.
And then with all of that new knowledge and everything that we've gained from this project, we are just so inspired to watch it succeed, and we are simply, we started off our project in hopes to raise enough money just to cover 250 t-shirts that we could hand out, and now we're ending our project with just over $6,000 raised. It's just so moving to see all the people who have been willing to support this cause and help us get to a point where we can make such an impactful donation towards suicide awareness. And just recently, we've made it official that $5,500 will be going to the KIM Foundation, which is a local suicide awareness organization that really focuses on changing the stigma that surrounds mental health and specifically suicide, and this foundation is really important to us and those who have supported us during this process, and we're, again, just so grateful to be able to make this donation. One of those amazing things that happened during this project that I never expected was the community outreach. The community response was positive and every way possible, people wanted to help. By donating to our GoFundMe, buying t-shirts, and reaching out to their friends or family, or simply just going out and asking a person how they are doing, the three of us would like to thank the Douglas County Board for recognizing us. With suicide being such a difficult topic, we wanted to create awareness and make it a difference. We are extremely passionate about this cause and would like to share it with everyone. Thank you, guys, again.
Okay, I think we got some people that want to, I see Commissioner Friend on the button. Do you want to comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Ladies, make sure, we really appreciate, words can't describe how much we appreciate what you guys are doing. When I was your age, I didn't know what area of the world the sun came up, so you guys are, you guys are ahead of where I was, of course. Keep us informed as to the evolution of some of your initiatives, because I'm sure this isn't going to be the only one for you guys, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other commissioners on Zoom want to say anything?
Yes.
I'll just go down the line. Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to congratulate these three young ladies for the work that they've done. You are so right that this is such an important issue in our community, and what you've done is an inspiration to so many, and we appreciate you taking the time to be with us this morning, and hopefully we'll have some projects in the future that we may be able to work on together. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Well, as someone who attended Westside a long time ago, and that was where I graduated from, and also my son Paul, who graduated from Westside, and was a victim of suicide at the age of 26, I really applaud what you're doing. I thank you so much, hope to meet you three sometime along the way, and just personally thank you for what you're doing. Really, really appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Did you want to say anything?
I'd like to, I'd like to say how much I appreciate your efforts. As the Commissioner representing the Westside School District, it's heartening to see our young people stepping up in such a responsible fashion during this tough times. Kudos to you and everyone involved with the DECA program. I look forward to seeing this progress, and I want to say that you are a great example of civic responsibility, and for young people, this is really encouraging for the future of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to close to anything? Commissioner Boyle?
Yep, I just want to say, again, this is a huge thing. Anytime we can get kids involved in something like this, it just makes a giant difference. But more importantly, the fact that you're willing to be civically active like that, you really have the potential to be great leaders. I mean, I think about, my mom was in politics, and she always tried to promote women, and especially young women, and people who were not represented in government, and with that, I just want to make sure that you understand, you're active at this age, but continue to be active in not just political events, but these types of social issues. You have, there's a lot of reward in that, but the community needs forward-thinking people like that, and never be afraid to step out and take a stand and do things like this. So, you're our future, and we're looking forward to seeing what you all produce in the future.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Please vote.
I vote yes.
I vote yes, and want to thank Maureen again for bringing this to the board.
Yes, yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, and Morgan voting virtually, all their commissioners voting in person.
Okay, if I hear no dissent, I will, we will recess through unanimous consent the Board of Commissioners meeting, and we will now roll call for the Board of Equalization. Mr. Clerk?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Boyle is absent. Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
And Mr. Chair?
Here. Item A is Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Equalization Meeting Held Tuesday, February 9, 2021. Item B is Call for a Meeting Set Tuesday, March 2 of 2021, is the date for hearing on the certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the Board? Is there a motion approved?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Maureen Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Voting yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, and Morgan voting virtually, all their commissioners present voting in person.
Item C is Citizens' Comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda items regarding the Board of Equalization that are not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to Resolutions D, E, and F. Is there a motion to approve D, E, and F, and adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Friend, there's a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Please vote.
I vote yes.
Voting yes.
Borgeson, yes.
That's going to be interesting.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, jeez.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, and Morgan voting virtually, all their commissioners present voting in person.
Okay, if there is no dissent, we will unanimously, by unanimous consent, reconvene the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting, and with that, we'll go to item one, Minutes and Claims. Letter A is Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Commissioners Meeting Held Tuesday, February 9, 2021, sorry. Item B is Approval of the Claims Submitted for Payment and Process Through Tuesday, February 23, 2021. Is there a motion approved?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Maureen Boyle, there's a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Friend. Roll call. I mean, please vote.
Borgeson, yes.
Voting yes. He, Jane, and Morgan.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, and Morgan voting virtually, all their commissioners present in person.
Okay, so, just so we get the anonymity out, I'll ask for, I'll ask for a vote here, and then I'll, I'll ask the clerk to just facilitate the Zoom roll call, so everybody's not screaming out. Are you all fine with that?
Yep.
All righty.
Yeah.
With that, let's go to item two, which is the consent agenda. There are 18 items listed. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
There is a motion by Commissioner Friend, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Maureen Boyle. Any questions, concerns out there? Okay, Mr. Clerk?
I've been notified that item P, the Hospice Services Agreement with Endless Journey, needs to be pulled.
Okay, note that. All righty, any?
Any motion on that? Or not to pull it?
No, just need. Right now, I think I saw, is there a Commissioner's hand up?
Mr. Chair, I thought that Public Service Commissioner Crystal Rhodes had her hand up.
Right, I'm gonna come, I see you, I'm gonna come to. I thought I saw one of you all's hands up, no. All righty, Crystal?
I actually wanted to make some public comments, so I think that that is addressed later in the agenda, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, hold on.
Okay.
All righty.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there is a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda with letter P pulled. Please vote internally. Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll call online?
Sure. Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, and Morgan voting virtually, the other commissioners present voting in person.
Okay, we'll go to item three, Recognition and Proclamations. Letter A is Recognition of the Fallon County Employees Who Are Retired, LeVale Whitner, who worked for the Douglas County Department of Corrections for 26 years. Like to say, we wish, we wish all the retirees well in their retirement and thank them for their services to Douglas County. With that, is there a motion to approve item A?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Friend.
Second.
Seconded by Maureen Boyle. I ask that we please vote in the chamber, and Mr. Clerk, please call the roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, and Morgan voting virtually, the other commissioners present voting in person.
Okay, we'll go to item three, Recognition and Proclamations. Letter A is Recognition of the Fallen County Employees Who Are Retired, LeVale Whitner, who worked for the Douglas County Department of Corrections for 26 years. Like to say, we wish, we wish all the retirees well in their retirement and thank them for their services to Douglas County. With that, is there a motion to approve item A?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Friend, there's a second.
Second.
Seconded by Maureen Boyle. Roll call. I mean, please vote.
Borgeson, yes.
Voting yes. He, Jane, and Morgan.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, and Morgan voting virtually, all their commissioners present in person.
Okay, so, just so we get the anonymity out, I'll ask for, I'll ask for a vote here, and then I'll, I'll ask the clerk to just facilitate the Zoom roll call, so everybody's not screaming out. Are you all fine with that?
Yep.
All righty.
Yeah.
With that, let's go to item two, which is the consent agenda. There are 18 items listed. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
There is a motion by Commissioner Friend, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Maureen Boyle. Any questions, concerns out there? Okay, Mr. Clerk?
I've been notified that item P, the Hospice Services Agreement with Endless Journey, needs to be pulled.
Okay, note that. All righty, any?
Any motion on that? Or not to pull it?
No, just need. Right now, I think I saw, is there a Commissioner's hand up?
Mr. Chair, I thought that Public Service Commissioner Crystal Rhodes had her hand up.
Right, I'm gonna come, I see you, I'm gonna come to. I thought I saw one of you all's hands up, no. All righty, Crystal?
I actually wanted to make some public comments, so I think that that is addressed later in the agenda, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, hold on.
Okay.
All righty.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there is a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda with letter P pulled. Please vote internally. Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll call online?
Sure. Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, and Morgan voting virtually, the other commissioners present voting in person.
Okay, we'll go to item three, Recognition and Proclamations. Letter A is Recognition of the Fallen County Employees Who Are Retired, LeVale Whitner, who worked for the Douglas County Department of Corrections for 26 years. Like to say, we wish, we wish all the retirees well in their retirement and thank them for their services to Douglas County. With that, is there a motion to approve item A?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Friend.
Second.
Seconded by Maureen Boyle. I ask that we please vote in the chamber, and Mr. Clerk, please call the roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Got it, okay.
All right, motion passes six to zero. Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, and Morgan voting virtually, the other commissioners present voting in person.
Item four, Citizens' Comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to comment on items that are not listed on the Douglas County Board of Commissioners agenda. I know we have one on Zoom, I'll go to you after I come internally. Is there anyone in the chamber that wants to speak on Citizens' Comments?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'd like to comment on tax increment financing at this board. Maybe it seems out of order, however, Douglas County raises my property taxes every year, partly due to TIF. We had a wonderful article in the World Herald, plus on the, off, on the online edition, three or four other wonderful articles, trying to explain them, but what they do not explain, and I want the public to know the answer to this, so I'm going to ask the question. The property taxes that are delayed for 15 years, now they want 20 or 25 down at the state, they're not delaying my property taxes, are they? Does the developer actually pay property taxes on his project? Or who are they talking about? Whose property taxes? And where does the developer get a loan to defray all the costs that they talk about in these articles, and in some of the proclamations that we hear down at, particularly the city? I don't get to defray my costs, and is there by any chance any connection with the Omaha Land Bank to the developers that are getting a loan for some of their pre-development? Infrastructure costs, the streets and sewers? We don't get that break. So, I'd like the media and the boards, both the county and the city, to explain TIF and who it is that they keep saying the property taxes remain steady for 20 years, 15 years, and by that time, the higher property taxes from who? Will pay off all of that loan money and cost of the project? Who are they talking about? Whose property taxes? That needs to be clarified, because I don't want to be an idiot. I'd like to be informed, but I've never seen that defined. But I can't imagine that people that are building these things are going to stay in Omaha and pay higher property taxes themselves, they're in business to make the money, so what sense does it make for them to stay here to pay off a 20-year loan? Are my property taxes paying off his loan? That's development, I realize, but I think you need to be totally honest with us about that. Please explain it so that we'll be informed.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber?
Good morning, Commissioners. 3306 Bird Street, Luis Jimenez. I'm going to talk about one of your colleagues across the hallway over there, a council member, Colleen Brennan. The reason why I'm doing that is, one of my friends says they have to do a better job introducing people. It's a good quality to have. So, I wrote an article titled "The Road to City Council: Colleen Brennan, Ward 5." I'll read what it says. Colleen Brennan was elected to the Omaha City Council to represent District 5, Southwest Omaha, Millard Ario, to replace Rich Pauls, who was elected to the Nebraska Legislature in the 2020 general election. The opening allowed for the councilors to select Brennan to the city council.
Luis, Luis, hold on, hold on. I'm gonna ask you where you're going with this, because it is, you know, a city council election is not a county board matter, and I do, I'm gonna just tell you, I have issue with talking about the elected official out here on the floor, so.
Okay, well, if you'd let me.
Is county board related?
It's not on your agenda, it's.
But is it county board related?
With the, county board related?
Yeah.
In what way?
It says county board related items that are not listed on the county board agenda.
Let me see here.
If not, I'm going to use this question and ask you to hold out, because I don't want to use this platform as something to get at another elected official.
Okay, well, I want to say that we're amongst power players, and we can uplift the community, we can uplift the elected officials, and it's important that we do that. I've seen the various years that I've been attending local government in the Civic Center, hope, I mean, not much dialogue between the councilors and the commissioners. Senator McCallister is asking, or is thinking about eliminating both, both sides of, here in the Civic Center, the commissioners and the city council, so that there is only one, you know, form, one form of local government. I don't think that's a good idea. I think that what we have here, in the subdivisions with the county, and then when the citizens in, within the county incorporate and become populous, they get organized into a metropolitan city, and I think that what Colleen Brennan talks about in my article, that we, we need to find commonalities in order to move forward, that's important. I don't think we need to be labeling and being divisive and trying to separate this and that. I think working together is a good idea, and you guys could teach us by having the county government and the city government work together. I also want to say that.
Just one minute.
Yes, thank you, that Rich Pauls did mention that Douglas County has more women than men, and that was one of the reasons why he supported electing Colleen Brennan into the city council. Having said that, I also, on this side of government, local government, the commissioners, I am disappointed with the talk about, like, family and friends in the commission, in the Board of Commissioners, that we talk about the Boils. I think that Commissioner Maureen Boyle is exemplary resident and deserves to be credited for who she is as an individual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Larry, you had your turn.
I would like to reply, please.
No, not in this forum, no.
Particularly because it does have to do with county governance.
No, you had your turn, so I'm gonna say no.
And the other time, I would have been called out of order and escorted out for bringing politics to the microphone.
And I cut it off, so, thank you. Anyone else internally? All right, Commissioner Rhodes?
Thank you. My name is Commissioner Crystal Rhodes. I live here in Douglas County. I am deeply concerned and troubled about what appears to be some very questionable data that is being reported by both the state and the county. I want to go through just a couple of concrete examples, because I'm limited, I'm limited to five minutes here, but this is not an all-inclusive list. It's just to give you a sampling of some of the inconsistencies that I've been seeing. When you look at the dashboards and you look at what's being reported in the media, it's very difficult to ascertain whether or not Douglas County is actually receiving the appropriate amount of vaccines, and in fact, a public record request was made to the governor's office. Request. And in fact, a public record request was made to the governor's office requesting that information by Sarah Cohen, asking how many vaccines has the state been given and how many have been distributed by county? And they responded to that public request by saying they don't have that information. It'll be March 4th before they get it, which I think begs the question, if they don't know what we've got, how can they be certain that we're getting the correct allocation? If those numbers don't exist, that's almost worse than them saying, we just don't want to give it to you because we haven't been following our own plan. When you look at the dashboards, there's a lot of variation. So, for example, there are a number of vaccines that are being reported as being administered in Douglas County, not to Douglas County residents. And the explanation for that is that these are police, firefighters, and healthcare workers who work in Douglas County but don't reside here. And to be sure, there are a number of them. But I seriously doubt that that number exceeds 20,000. I've started issuing public records requests to police, to fire, and I will also do so to the relevant healthcare agencies because there's no way for that to make sense. In addition, even if that is completely correct, and there really are that number of people that work in Douglas County not residing here, there are just problems and inconsistencies in the data. So for example, when you go through day by day and you look at the total number of vaccines administered in Douglas County versus the number that were administered to residents, sometimes the number that are administered to residents is greater than the total. That simply can't be correct. The total can never, the, the number of Douglas County residents being vaccinated should never exceed the total number of vaccinations on any given day. And yet we see that consistency in a number of places. I have asked Dr. Port for an explanation from, about that, and I still have not received a response. In addition to that, so last week, I've created a spreadsheet where I'm going day by day and plugging in those numbers. It reported that 20,984 doses were given to people outside of Douglas County last week. If you add in those numbers, the total jumps to 22,310. And yet, the difference between those two weeks doesn't justify the increase, so you've got a difference of 1,000, 1,326. And yet, 1,359 vaccines were said to have been distributed when you look at the total. So there are just a lot of problems with this data. In addition to that, you know, I did a public record request from Douglas County asking for the number of vaccinations. The number I was given was 78,640. That was last, as of last week, as of February 14th. And today, that number is being reported as 106,942. So did we get 28,302 doses of vaccine last week? Because it was reported that we had a delay in vaccine coming into Nebraska due to the massive storms everywhere last week. So there are just a lot of inconsistency in these numbers. And Dr. Boras said that she's been monitoring this carefully and that she's confident that Douglas County is receiving its allocation. But I just don't know how that can be correct if even the state, if the state doesn't even know how many vaccinations are being allocated to the state and on a county-by-county basis. I'm also deeply concerned because the plan allows for variation in the number and doses of vaccines allocated per county on the basis of the prioritized groups. When you look at the changes that Governor Ricketts is proposing to exclude people with pre-existing conditions and.
You got a minute, Krista.
All on 65 and above, that's only 13.4% of the Douglas County population, and a third of those people have already been vaccinated. And that doesn't count what went through the federal program, through the pharmacies and the other, and the, and the nursing facility. So there's a lot of questions related to this data, and there's a lot more examples I could give you, but for the sake of brevity, I won't do that here. I also have a lot of concern about the accessibility of the vaccination sites. People who live in North and South Omaha, and frankly, midtowners for that matter, consider anything west of 72nd Street to be West Omaha. And by that metric, we've got three vaccination sites in West Omaha and only one downtown. We have the highest concentration of, you know, infections in North and South Omaha in our county. And the communities of color have been prioritized by this board. You passed a resolution this summer saying how important it was to be mindful of that and making decisions. I would ask that as additional vaccination sites are added, that it is made a priority, that we are serving those community of colors who have been disproportionately impacted. There is nothing killing more people of color in our country right now than COVID.
Commissioner, I'm gonna actually wrap it up.
And this is an emergency and needs to be treated as such. I would ask also.
Commissioner, thank you. That's time.
Well, I would, I would like to finish if that's all right. I would ask for a personal courtesy here. I'm directly asking that the county board convene a meeting and ask Dr. Port to brief elected officials in Douglas County so that we may know what is really happening.
Thank you. Anyone else out there?
I'd just like to thank the commissioner for coming forward and raising these important questions. Thank you for taking time out of your busy day.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll move on to presentations. And item five, letter A, presentation on NACO's Leadership Academy, an online leadership training program for county employees. Mary Ann, I'll, I'll let you introduce, excuse me, Commissioner Borgeson. I'll let you introduce Tim and go from there.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I'm excited to introduce this presentation. As you know, counties affect the lives of our residents every day. And when our frontline staff are empowered as leaders, we deliver services more effectively. This NACO High Performance Leadership Academy is an amazing resource that would connect our staff with practical leadership training. The academy uses innovative, interactive, online learning platform that combines real-time webinars, recorded sessions, and small group discussions to deliver this effective training without traveling from the county. Thus, in saving money and maximizing time, but at the same time, providing this excellent leadership training to our staff. And so with us today, I'd like to introduce Mr. Tim Rashuti, who's the CEO of the Leadership Academy, to dive in a little bit deeper to what they have to offer and hopefully we'll be able to take advantage of this for our employees. So, Tim?
Commissioner Borgeson, thank you so much. And Commissioner Rogers, thank you for the time on the agenda today while you address so many other important items. You know, as Commissioner Borgeson mentioned, we have been delivering leadership development training in a very non-disruptive way so that individuals that are already extremely busy have a non-disruptive means to engage in leadership development, to make existing leaders better and the emerging leaders within our counties ready, ready for the challenges that you all are talking about today and that others beyond you will be talking about in the future. And when we think about the challenges that we have and the changes that we're currently dealing with, leadership is one of the most primary variables needed to address the, the counties and the citizens and the residents that we serve every day in the work that we do. And NACO, the National Association of Counties, has done a significant amount of research regarding the pressures of change that we are working to address today. And, you know, COVID notwithstanding, there are a number of other items that require great leadership in these times of great change. And sometimes leadership development is extremely difficult. It's extremely difficult to design a program that is relevant and practical, immediately actionable, is non-disruptive to the busy schedules of individuals within county business. And we raise the question to a number of individuals, and we currently, you know, provide leadership development to nearly two-thirds of all counties in the United States in collaboration and partnership with NACO. And we ask counties, large urban counties and small rural counties, what if individuals like General Colin Powell, CEOs from Fortune 1000 companies, county officials, elected and staff-level officials, and leaders within counties? What if all of these individuals, as well as academicians and coaches, came together to design a leadership development program for you and make it practical, make it relevant, make it non-disruptive to busy schedules? What if that was available to you? And the reality is, it is. You know, General Powell does work with us in delivering this program along with a number of other executives. And there have been three individuals specifically from Douglas County that have participated in this program and have graduated from it. There are 43 of the 93 counties in Nebraska that have participated in this program. We do a lot of work right now with John Cannon, previously Larry Dix, the executive director of Nebraska Counties, and their staff, Candace Meredith and others. John and Candace both have been through this program as well from Nebraska, making sure that other counties, Douglas, as well as others across Nebraska, are very well aware of this program. And just to provide a bit of background around its importance of leadership, NACO has identified this as a signature program. We certainly don't present this slide to try to compete against the desire, the dire needs of early childhood development and addressing the opioid crisis and COVID. But it is a signature project within NACO and because of its level of importance to make sure that, again, our existing leaders become better and our emerging leaders become ready. And this has been broadcasted when Commissioner Borgeson served as president of NACO. She talked significantly about the need for leadership development among those signature projects and other projects that, that, that were a primary focus while she was interim, you know, this past year as president at NACO. And part of her role and the involvement that she had is what allowed this growth and adoption of this program to be so proficient. And we've had everyone from executives and elected officials, executive judges, as well as commissioners go through this program and benefit from it, as well as HR directors and staff-level individuals responsible for the business of counties. So it is a program that is designed for you all. It is a program that is designed for leaders that are responsible for teams of individuals to address big challenges and change that we have in front of us, as well as make even more efficient the services and products of county government within their counties and for their residents and their citizens in every county across the country. So we would encourage every commissioner to look into this program. You can certainly learn more at naco.org.skills or to reach out to Commissioner Borgeson or myself at the academy. We stand ready to help answer any questions for you, as well as to help enroll your teams to make your counties even more efficient, more effective with the challenges and changes that you face every day. So I'm happy to take questions. I'll turn it back to, to Commissioner Borgeson for any final remarks. And again, Commissioner Rogers, thank you for the time today. And again, I'll stay on in case there are questions. So Commissioner Borgeson, thank you again.
Well, thank you for being with us. And again, our most important resource that we have is our, are our employees. And again, we have been through, across the country, this pandemic that has taken a toll on a lot of our employees. But this, I think, would be an excellent way to give back to those employees and provide them with this excellent training. And so I will work with our staff to come up with a way that we can proceed with offering this to our employees. But again, if anybody has any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or, you know, again, go online and read about it and see what you think about it. But it is an excellent opportunity for our staff, and I, I hope that we're able to come up with a good offering for them. So thank you again for being with us and taking the time to be with us this afternoon, this morning.
I don't see any questions here. Any questions from commissioners on Zoom? Okay, seeing none. Tim, appreciate it because I definitely, I, I can say you were into this online leadership piece before Zoom there, so you were ahead of your time in this. And sometimes lightning strikes, and I definitely want to vouch for the program and say it's definitely worth your time. Thanks for all the effort on that.
Thank you so much.
With that, we'll go on to item B and the weekly COVID, and the COVID vaccine update from Dr. Poor, if she is on now. And she may not.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. So, so on you, whenever you're ready.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so first of all, I just want to share with you a little bit what we are seeing and what you are hearing in regards to cases. And we are seeing a consistent decrease in cases, especially last week again. We had a 23% decrease from the week before, and this was the lowest since 19th of September. We also saw a 23% decrease in our testing. And we saw a seven-day rolling average of 15 new cases per day, per 100,000. That tells you potentially that we have less than 100 new cases a day in Douglas County. I think what is remarkable is the decreases we have seen in hospitalization. Mainly when I looked at it this morning with the newest data of having 92 COVID patients in our Omaha-area hospitals, that's a 67% decrease since January 1st. When you are looking at the individuals on ventilators, we have 15 on ventilators today. And in January 1, we had 41. That is a decrease of 63%. We have 43 of these 92 COVID patients in ICUs today. In January 1, we had 76. That's a 33% decrease in ICU patients. So all over, I would say, you know, a lot of, a lot of positive data. So I want to move on to giving you an update on vaccination. I think I shared with you last week, or the week before, that we had last week, we had 7,250 doses of vaccine that were given to Douglas County. By Friday, we heard that one of the health systems had extra doses. We took all those doses and we increased the vaccination administration at Creighton University on Saturday. We increased it. We gave 4,796 first-time doses on Saturday at Creighton University. From 9:00 AM in the morning to 9:00 PM with three shifts, 24 vaccination stations. This week, we are getting 10,660 doses. That's an increase of 34% over last week. The state allocation for this week is 36,620 doses. Of those doses, 500 are taken for state facilities. So that leaves the state with 36,120 doses. Of those, Douglas County gets 10,660 doses. That is 29% if I calculate correctly. Of those 10,660 doses, 10% are for educators, which means 1,066 doses. 90% are for those 65 years and above. We have scheduling on our website through March 14th. And as of today, we have 850 appointments open still. So I really would encourage everybody 65 years and above to make an appointment. And we'll send out some, some additional information again to those who are on our information line. I just want to address a little bit some of the concerns that have been brought up. And it's really a little bit disheartening because people need to understand what this issue is around data. If you remember in the beginning, vaccine was given to the healthcare systems directly. It wasn't given to Douglas County Health Department. Those healthcare systems then went on and vaccinated their healthcare providers. The duty for us, Douglas County Health Department, was then to go in and vaccinate dentists, pharmacists, those that are not correctly in partnership with the hospital systems and first response, and paramedics. So then we moved into 1B, which included then the elderly, and where we strategized. And at the same time, the federal government gave doses directly to the big, large pharmacies. Those pharmacies under the program vaccinated the long. Those pharmacies under the program vaccinated the long-term care facilities in Douglas County. Most of them, probably I would say 80% of them, have received first and second dose. I think what you all need to understand is the system is, it's called NESIS, Nebraska Immunization Registry System. That is the system that counts the doses are registered there that are admitted, that are provided to the Douglas County Health Department. At the same time, only those individuals who have been administered a dose and the data has flown into that system, only those individuals are counted. So I will share something with you. This is a very cumbersome process at this time. We have a backlog. We have a backlog of data entry. And that backlog on Friday was more than 11,000 records. So what are we doing now? You are saying, and then in addition to that, we had the 5,000 administrations that were given at Creighton. So that gives, gives you 16,000. We had on Sunday, a clinic at Nebraska Medicine. I'm not quite sure how many doses they administered. We gave them around 700 doses. So as you can see, that is the backlog. That is not on our dashboard. That is, that is not in the system. So people who are trying to count now, I would say the, the system is not, is not, is not optimal at this time. So as of today, yesterday we did training. As of today, we have 30 additional people who enter data. That's all they do. They can enter about, I think, 120 data per day. We have, by minute, we are counting them. We have one quality control person for every five person that enters data. We are going into a contract with the state to contract with an, with an outside company to do that. So I think all of this criticism that you heard this morning makes me really angry because I can tell you, our staff is working every day from 6:30 in the morning because that's when the vans are going to get vaccine, bringing it to the site, making sure that everybody has everything they need and can give, administer the vaccine safe. That is our priority, administer the vaccine effective and safe. So I want to, I want to, then another criticism I heard, and I take them personally because I see my staff, I talk to my staff, I go to the clinics. I was there at Creighton on Saturday. I see what, what all goes into this. This is an enormous endeavor. And I don't need people to sit at home trying to count up and say two and two isn't four. Don't do that. Take my word for it that we administer as quickly as we get the vaccine in a safe manner as possible. The criticism according to the sites. So I just want to share with you a little bit what we have in North and South Omaha. Not going west out of 77th or whatever was talked about. So in North Omaha, we have Hy-Vee up in Florence on 30th Street. We have Charles II at the Home for Boys. We have a van who goes directly to the Omaha Housing Authority and to the homeless shelters. We have a new, Emmanuel, I guess that's not North Omaha. And we have Creighton Rasmussen, which was a site in the middle of town that we thought would work. Not much different than if we would have had the CHI Center. In South Omaha, we have One World. They are, as of next week, they are going to get direct doses from the federal government. That is going to criticize some of the numbers again. It's going to make it more difficult because they need to feed their data into a federal system. We have Fred Leroy, who receives doses from us. We have opened the COAC Center as a site in North, in South Omaha. And we have gotten into a contract with a site on 3505 L Street, which is the former Hy-Vee. That site is going to be staffed by Health Department and potentially is going to open up on April 1st. That's going to be a long-term site. Those churches that we have at this time, they are short-term, you know. And we have, we are going to have, the one site I want to talk to you is 6404 North 73rd Plaza. That is going to be staffed by CHI Health. And then we are going to have one at 749 North 114th Street, which was former Russell's Guitar Store, which is going to be staffed by Methodist. We are still looking for a site. I would prefer one more site in North Omaha. It's very difficult to find. I tell you, we have visited many sites. Metro Community College, we thought that would be a really good site. We cannot go in there. So potentially, we need to find a smaller site. It may not be as big as some of these other sites are. At the same time, now we know also that the Walmart pharmacies are going to come, are going to get direct shipment from, from the federal government. There are already three pharmacies in Douglas County who are going to get direct shipment. That's the Medicine Man on 156 and Pacific. Let's Think Whole in Exhaven Village. And that is a pharmacy called VRX, 925 North 90th Street. Those pharmacies were decided by the federal government. We had nothing to do with it. However, now that the Walmart pharmacy is coming on site, I have had discussions with the state that we are able to prioritize where those pharmacies would be first. And so the first ones I have in 50th and Ames would be our first one. And the other one, 360 North Saddle Creek Road. And then one, 6,304 North 99th Street. So those are our priority sites, which we gave to the state to share with the feds to say those would be the sites that we would like to open first. And the fourth, there is another one. It's on 50th and L Street. So I'm more, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. But I would like to ask you all in regards to data, be patient with us. Once the state system is at work, which may be at the end of March, then things would be electronically fed into the system and we would not have this manual entry. That, you know, addresses a whole other set of issues. We will always have our information line for those who are not, who don't have a computer, who don't have access or just cannot do this, this electronic appointment system. So we'll always have that by phone. We can actually put appointments in for individuals. So let me just share with the county, we will, we are doing our best we can. But I also want to share with the county one more concern that I have. And that is the expense. The expense of these sites and the expense of this endeavor is increasing. And so I want to share with the county board that it may be very likely and most likely that I will have to come back to the board and ask for more resources, financial resources. So, you know, more than, more than happy to give you. We are doing projections, what it will cost out for six months right now. But that's, that's where we are right now.
Thank you, Dr. Poor. I'll look in, in the chamber first to see if there's any questions. Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
Thank you, Dr. Poor. That was a very thorough report. And I think that a lot of the frustration that people have, Maureen, has to do, Maureen has to do with the logistics of it, not so much with the effort of your department. After hearing all of the locations that, that the vaccines are, or that the county is working with, it's, it's pretty, a pretty impressive list, to be honest. I think part of it is trying to, to herd cats a little bit where you've got vaccines coming from the federal government, going to some pharmacies, and then Douglas County gets some, and then Nebraska, Nebraska gets some. So to even have any type of grasp on this is absolutely amazing to me. So I appreciate that. And then just a couple of thoughts. I appreciate everything you're doing and I'm sure you've thought of these things. But if you could just explain things like the COVID drive-through sites. Can they, can there be drive-through vaccination sites? Or can we use a major site like, like Ralston Arena right now that doesn't have, I know it's not in the north or south parts, but, or, I mean, the, when you talk about costs, I mean, something like that is run by the city of Ralston. Maybe it wouldn't be as expensive as some of these other sites.
Yes, so Commissioner Boyle, yes, we are seriously thinking about drive-through sites. But as you know, last week in March, it's, it's just probably not a good time yet. So we are foreseeing to have sites open probably as early as April. And what we are thinking and are assured that it's probably going to happen. All the test Nebraska sites, and there are three in Douglas County, they are going to switch over and also provide vaccination. So we are foreseeing that's going to happen. Now, the Ralston site, we have great interest in it and as well as Baxter Arena. So those are two, two big sites. Baxter has some availability right now. But for Baxter and for Ralston to be in effect, we need to get more vaccine because those vaccine, those sites can take many more people, many more individuals. So yes, we are looking at those sites very seriously.
That, that makes sense. I, I feel like when you see things on TV about people in Florida lining up for days to get their vaccines, we just don't see that here. Now granted, the weather has something to do with it. But to me, that tells me right there that you're doing everything logistically in your, your power to, to make this run as smoothly as possible. And I, as a healthcare professional myself, truly see the effort and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Looking, no questions in chamber. Anybody on Zoom?
Question. I have a question.
Go ahead. You're on the clock.
Yes, um, I thought if we raised our hands, you would see that. Apparently not, but.
That's why I recognized you. I saw your hand.
Doctor, thank you for this briefing. I think that, you know, part of the difficulty here, and maybe this leads to your frustration, is a, is a communication transparency question. Along the lines that we talked about in the last couple of weeks regarding allowing people to zoom in to the, to the health board meetings probably would be more effective if the public knew how to do that. And I know that you're going to do that going forward. It, it leads to, I think, people's frustrations, particularly in light of the fact that as of this morning, over a half million people are dead in the United States as a result of this. People are anxious when a half million of our fellow citizens are dead in less than a year to get reassurance from you and from the government that we're doing everything that we can. So I, you know, I'm not exactly sure that it's the effort that is failing, but maybe communications, we could step up in terms of getting that out. And I don't know if you were on earlier when Public Service Commissioner Crystal Rhodes asked for a briefing for elected officials. This is something that you and I have discussed, I know. And it probably would help alleviate some of these concerns if we were able to do that targeted briefing to our area elected officials. Because I get daily questions from people elected to public office in our community about this. And I, I try to refer them to the appropriate entity. But, you know, this is something I think that maybe if we did, a briefing would be a good step forward. Maybe if we publicized how to actually go on and hear the public health board meetings, that would be a good thing. We have, I think, a communications challenge here, as well as, you know, just the supply challenge, which is largely, I know, beyond our control. I'm glad to hear our doses are up from 7250 to 10,660. And I think we can anticipate that ramps up as time goes forward. The president has said, you know, 100,000 doses in the first 100 days and we're exceeding that. I think we're at 1.7 million doses a day, which is more than adequate to get to that. So planning forward, I, I think, like you are talking about in terms of adding personnel for data entry, is an enormously important thing right now because this is going to ramp up. We're going to go from 10,000 hopefully to tens of thousands in the next few weeks and months. So that would be something that I, I think, if you're talking the increase in resources that you may need, is absolutely justified. I think 13 million that we originally gave to the Health Department from CARES, accounting for that is going to be necessary to go forward. But we're going to get, I believe, in excess of 100 million from this latest relief act that's in Congress right now. And so the resources should be available. It's the planning now, I think, that's important for those resources to come. Just a quick question on the, on the venues. And I, I wish we could publicize that list that you gave on our website, on the Health Department's website, front page, front page. I know that the Do Right, Do Now website is up, front page on that. So that all you have to do is go to the front page and you're going to see all of these and the availabilities. You don't have to do.
Got one minute.
The South Omaha Metro Campus would be one that I would, in addition to what Commissioner Boyle said about Baxter and Ralston, South Omaha Metro Campus is a possibility. The final question that I have is the, going forward, these, these regular supply questions, could we post those as well? Because I can, as, as you do, these, these questions that are frustrating relative to, the numbers don't add up. The numbers don't add up. And your explanation is essential because the numbers aren't all just one number. It's not just the state's number. The feds are doing something over here. Something else is happening over here. People need to have that clearly front-paged again, almost on a daily basis. You do a good job giving us the daily numbers. Mr. Rooney from your department sends out those and I read them.
It's time, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Something similar. Thank you.
Dr. Poor, you want to respond?
Well, you know, Commissioner Kavanaugh, I agree with, I agree with you with everything. I thought to a certain degree with having me on the agenda every week at the county commissioner meeting, that would kind of fulfill that communication to elected official. So that's kind of what, what we need to talk about. I'm also, I tell you, you know, data is good, but it has to be correct. And therefore, I really would like to have this system in, at a better place before I start communicating a lot because the last thing I want to do is communicate something wrong. So I think it's, it's always this balance. I agree with you and I understand completely. Communication is interesting. I thought we have on our website actually the different sites. And also when people want to make an appointment, when they bring that up, it shows them exactly the sites and that they, where they can click, where there are open appointments and where they are not. So we'll, we'll do better. I promise you that. And it's good to know that we can do better. Thank you.
Working together, we will do better, doctor. Thank you very much.
Any other commissioners with questions?
Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Chairman Rogers, thank you. And Addie, I just want you to know, I mean, it's real easy to sit back and tear apart everything that someone is trying to do. And for whatever reason, that seems to be polarizing, a polarizing issue that gets out there on social media, in the media. But I can tell you. But I can tell you, for every person that says a negative, there's a positive, we're just not hearing them. I have heard people who have been to these sites and are very impressed and thankful for the professionalism, the efficiency, and the safety that your staff and the others that you've brought in to do these vaccinations have shown. And so I want you to know that not everybody thinks that this is a big debacle and, and a terrible operation. I, I believe that yes, you're right, that having you on every week was so that we would be able to get this information out. These meetings are not only accessible as they're happening, but they can go on and review them at their own leisure. During the whole COVID, and before the legislature went into session, we were having weekly conversations with the Douglas County senators. They were very appreciative of those, and as they are of these updates that you're given on a weekly basis at the county board meeting. So again, I know it's frustrating, and it's frustrating as a commissioner to be on social media and see people throwing out comments like, oh, did you know Douglas County was throwing away vaccines? And it was like a totally false statement, but it took a life of its own. Thank goodness it was taken down, but those are the things that, again, for whatever reason, people seem to, again, like to do, I guess. But just know, you as a leader, you as our health director, you have amazing backing from folks in this community for the job that you and your staff are doing, and I just want to personally thank you for that. This is a huge undertaking. And can we always do better? Absolutely, and we're always striving to do better. But as much as there's criticism, I think that it's time that people start letting you know how well things are going. And again, I hear those, and thank those people for saying it, and wanted you to know that we are hearing those positive comments about you and the operation. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nothing, anything you want to close with Dr. Paul?
I have a couple more questions, please.
Go ahead.
Doctor, the governor came out, I think, in the last week and said that people with pre-existing conditions were no longer going to be currently eligible for vaccination. So that's, that's caused a lot of concern, obviously, among the community. A lot of people have pre-existing conditions, were eligible, and now aren't. I, I was wondering if there's a plan going forward or some type of a timeline, because I get a lot of requests from constituents with pre-existing conditions about when can we possibly think about getting back to giving vaccines to people with pre-existing conditions who are very vulnerable? What can you tell us about that?
Thank you, Commissioner, and it's really a good question. And so just this morning, I actually listened to Nebraska Medicine and Infectious Disease Doc, who really did a literature search in regards to what comorbidities are at the highest risk level. And so I think what you are seeing, we are getting together with healthcare providers to really try to determine what is the way to move forward. And we are seeing, and our data shows that too, that age is the predictor of death and hospitalization. And so it is the right thing to do to prioritize based on age. But I also understand that there are especially some younger individuals who may have some immunodeficiency or so on, or several comorbidities together. So now with the healthcare providers, because this is really where healthcare needs to come in now and help us. So there is a meeting this week already with the healthcare coalitions to try to see how can we get around this. And you know, there is, there are these risk calculators where people can calculate, if you have A, B, C, and D, you, and you are at a certain age, you are then at a higher risk, and you get a number. But at the end of this morning, somebody said, do we really want to make the system so complicated that it potentially is prolonging individuals for getting the vaccine? Or is not our goal to get the vaccine into arms as quickly as possible and as conscientious as possible? And so that's the balance we are weighing. So what I am saying to those individuals, and believe me, I get a lot of those requests, I understand the anxiety of it. I would also say that we are working with the healthcare system to potentially come forward with a plan, but I want the physicians to be involved in this. This is not Douglas County Health Department who is going to decide, well, you have this comorbidity and you have that, therefore you are getting priorities. I need the docs who are seeing those patients to try to tell us, you know, we have a hundred high, high-risk individuals, and therefore we need a hundred slots, and so that's what we will do.
Thank you. One last question. You indicated that the department has added thirty data entry staff to help us catch up with the lag on just the numbers. Do you have a timeline going forward with those new people online, where the numbers will be, I don't know if they'll be in real time, but they'll be at least, you know, in, in, up to date?
So what we are saying today by calculating how many entries each individual can do and so on, we are hoping by the end of this week, we are actually caught up with data entry. And then going forward, we can, we can decrease the amount, and of course, once we have the electronic system in place, that will be even better. But the goal is by the end of this week.
That's great, thank you.
All right, seeing nothing else. Dr. Paul, thank you, and I want to endorse Commissioner Borgson's comments, and just ask that the public have some grace as we try to work through this. With that said, we'll go on to item, committee reports, item seven, and that is item A, and it's the finance report, and item one is the budget report, and that is as submitted. Item two is discussion regarding the proposed creation of a strategy committee to hear funding requests and updates, and to make recommendations to the county board in regards to the upcoming CARES Act II federal funding allocation. Commissioner Borgson, do you want to explain?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I alerted all of you when I sent the, the agenda item out, that I was going to have this on the agenda because of a potential of about a hundred and eleven, hundred and twelve million dollars coming to Douglas County, and how important it was to have a plan on how to disperse that money. I think that from the last, beginning of this year actually, until currently, we can see the even more reason why it's important to have such a committee in place so that we can efficiently and effectively look at these requests and bring them to the board in an orderly fashion. And so I'm here to have the discussion, there really wasn't any on our pre-board meeting yesterday, but I'm bringing it to the board today as a discussion, and I'll have it on for approval next week. But again, it's just to create a better way of taking in requests from folks that are wanting some of the dollars and what they want it for, for us to review those, bring those to the board as recommendations, and then the board having their discussion. So I, I hope that there will be support to do this. Again, it's, it's solely to have a better process in place for if and when we get this additional money from the federal government.
Thank you. I'm just seeing heads shaking in the chamber, so I'm assuming we're good internally. Any questions on Zoom from commissioners?
I have a question.
Go ahead, you on the clock?
I think that it, it is important with this hundred and twelve million dollars coming that we have discussion, I think it's, just based on what we just heard, essential that that is a public discussion, and we already have a mechanism in the finance committee to hold hearings and have this discussion. Setting up these strategy committees simply puts a blinder on people's ability to, like we're doing today, zoom in and see and participate in public discussions. It's more open and transparent, have the finance committee hold a series, if they need to, of public briefings on this exact matter. It's why we have the finance committee. So I would say, take this idea and just make the status strategy committee, which will be behind closed doors, a public, open finance committee hearing or a series of hearings, and put it on Zoom, let people participate.
Thank you, anyone else? Go ahead.
Luisi Manas, 3306 Birch Street. I'm concerned about what Mr. Kavanaugh just said, that this would be a closed committee.
Can I say, Luis, it's not going to be a closed committee?
It's not?
No.
What guarantees?
Because we pretty much had the same process set up with the CARES Act, where we met every Monday, and it was an open Zoom meeting. Am I correct in that, Commissioner Borgson?
Yes.
So it's not going to be a closed meeting?
Well, if it's an open committee, I think it's a better, better setup than what you did last year, where you put the allocations during presentation on your agenda, which, which was kind of confusing. That, that was a dog?
That wasn't a dog.
That was somebody.
Nope, it's a dog.
Okay, I don't know, I didn't see a dog. Yeah, so that last year, you had these allocations during presentation, and now you are having them in the finance committee. But, you know, doing an ad hoc committee, that's common, common procedure in assemblies and organizations, so I would support that if it's available to the public. And it kind of goes to my point that I was trying to make during citizens' comments, that we need to find ways to work together for, for the betterment of the citizens in Douglas County. I guess that's it, thank you.
Thank you. I just know for the record, that the process last time, Luis, was there was a committee of the whole set up by at the time Commissioner Duda, and that committee of the whole met on Zoom, public meeting-wise, and that's how the recommendations came to the board. So there was, there was, there was a similar process in place. Commissioner Friend?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Just a, just a quick comment, I totally understand what, where, where this discussion is going, at least I believe I do. What I've always believed also is that more dialogue and more communication is always a good thing. And, and if, and if what Commissioner Borgson is promoting here is an open forum, like Luis just pointed out, then I don't see what the, I don't see what the issue is. When I got to this board, I realized, it seems like I'm on more subcommittees, and I'm in more meetings than I was when I was in the legislature. Now that seems crazy, but it's true. So this isn't Ford versus Ferrari, it's not one person making a decision, we make decisions by committee. So I, with all due respect, I don't know what Commissioner Kavanaugh mean, I mean, I, I've always believed that communication, especially if it's honest and open, and that type of dialogue is valuable. So I thought this was a great idea, not just because it was the chairperson who promoted it, but I think we're in a pretty good position with this thought process. Thank you, Mr., Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Looking, anyone in the chamber, anyone else?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Following up on Commissioner Friend's observation, to clarify, what I'm saying is, the finance committee needs to do its job on this and hold hearings, like the finance committee needs to do its job and hold hearings on the budget. We've had this discussion, finance committee doesn't hold budget hearings, and the hearings held last year on the CARES Act were not widely attended or publicized. The finance committee needs to hold and publicize committee hearings on financial questions like a hundred and twelve million dollars coming to Douglas County, like our half-billion-dollar annual budget. Do the job that the finance committee was set up. You were in the legislature, the appropriations committee held well-publicized public hearings on this. You can be on as many committees as you want, but your primary, important committee to pay attention to, the one you co-chair, is the finance committee. So we're already set up to do this, we don't need another committee to add to the numerous committees that you mentioned to do this job. The finance committee just needs to do its job in public, well-publicized, and let as many people come in and comment as possible.
Before I go to Commissioner Friend, just let me, let me note and correct the record. Douglas County's finance committee meetings are public and have been public every year. For the last years, the chairs of the committees have actually had the budget hearings here in the chamber in the meeting, so they could be televised and they're out. So there's not been a year where Douglas County's budgets have not been public. And they're also, I would justify, probably one of the more open processes in regards to, people are welcome to be in the room when we're going through that budget, so I wanted to clarify that on the record. Commissioner Friend, you had a request?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Commissioner Kavanaugh for the lecture. I've, I've been down this road before, and, and what he's telling me, the education that he's given me, I didn't need. I appreciate his, his thoughts and concerns, but I understand the appropriations process. I'm also co-chair of the finance committee, and I've been here for two months. So I'm not sure what leads people to believe that we're not actually going to have an open and clear understanding of the budget process. I would just argue, give me a little bit of time to actually get this process in place. So I love a good debate, Commissioner Kavanaugh knows that, and if you'd like to continue this, we can go offline, call over coffee, or whatever, whatever choice that he'd like, that debate will go on and on and on. But no, his points are well-taken, and I say, give us an opportunity. I am, I am sitting on a lot of committees, and I think that this is open, honest dialogue that's giving us information and the ability to digest stuff that we didn't know about before. So I'm not really sure I see what the problem is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Larry, you want to come in on this? Please, go ahead.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I want to thank Jim and, and Mike for bringing this up, because words do matter. We need to decide what dialogue means, and what communication means, and what debate means, and what conversation means, because it's quite clear from your own rules on the page that there will be no dialogue on anything on the agenda. Why would people come down here or any of your meetings, sub-meetings, if there cannot be any dialogue or communication two-way with you people? It's a big waste of time, and it costs twenty dollars a day to park down here. So these rules, and I think we recently threw out some of the parliamentary rules, and are now basically Robert's Rules of Order, but there still is not any conversation this way. So why would I go to the budget hearing meeting, when I probably can't have a two-way conversation there either? And quite frankly, I don't think that's the intent of the Open Meetings Act. Citizens have a right to petition their government and get an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry, for the record, you just participated in discussion on an agenda item. So I'd like to record a note. Anyone else? All right, again, as Commissioner Borgson stated, this is, we will bring it back up next month, and I think there will be an opportunity in that respect. Thank you. We'll go on to item three, with the resolution allocating fifty thousand dollars in general fund reserve money to nonprofit organization Whispering Roots for the refrigerated trailer to house food for Douglas County residents in need. I see, I saw Greg. Are you still there, Greg?
Here.
Okay, Greg, you want to give us a brief explanation?
Yes, thank you, Greg Tripp, CEO Whispering Roots, 4104 South 90th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68127. Whispering Roots is a nonprofit that's been providing emergency food distribution for the Omaha Douglas County metro area since the beginning of for the Omaha-Douglas County metro area since the beginning of COVID-19. To date, we've distributed approximately just over a million pounds of emergency food within the Omaha regional area. Based upon demand, and the USDA provides, we're also a USDA provider for the USDA food boxes, which now require cold storage. A lot of the folks that we serve and organizations that we serve are small organizations that don't have cold storage. They don't have infrastructure to accept semi-trailer loads of emergency food. So we aggregate all of that, and then we distribute it into the community via small groups, neighborhood, community groups, things of that nature. Based upon demand, we need to increase our capacity to store more food boxes, so that we can feed more people. And so, our request here is for funding to acquire four additional semi-trailers, refrigerated semi-trailers that we would hold at our logistics site, TransMotion, that's located at 24th and Ames. That's where we have our warehousing, our, our food boxes, our distribution, our, everything that we need in order to get that food out. So that's what this request is for. As you've seen with the weather recently, with the temperatures being cold outside, a lot of the groups that we just, that we support, they distribute immediately, just in time. So we have to drop the food on the day that they need it. With the weather, the way that it is banned, 40 below, things like that, sometimes they can't distribute food, and so we have to hold that for them, and that requires additional cold storage. I'm a trained military logistics officer, so this is nothing new for me. The planning that we put in place was specifically designed to help support and expand our capacity to provide and feed hungry people as the need arose. So that's what this request is for. That allows to get approximately six to nine months of additional storage capacity, to get more food out, and that's based upon fuel to run our reefers as well, and things of that nature. So that's what we are respectively asking the Board to support. Additional funding to get this additional capacity to feed more people in the Douglas County area.
Greg, give me the name of the federal program again, that's associated with-
So that's the Federal, the Food Box Program, Farmer's to Family Program.
Good.
That's the USDA program, and then we also purchase food boxes and produce and things like that to distribute to communities in need.
Got it.
We, we serve the people that are in the gaps.
Good.
So, small organizations, things like that.
Got it. Is there a motion to approve?
Can I ask a question?
Okay, I, I mean, is there a motion to approve, so we can have discussion on it?
Motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Maureen Boyle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fran. Commissioner Maureen Boyle, and then we'll go to whoever's on Zoom. Maureen, it's on you.
So I just had a couple of questions. One is this $50,000, it's, it's a great, a great service you're providing, of course, but the $50,000, is it a one-time request, one-time allocation? Is it, can you just give some information on that, too?
It's a one-time request, which will allow us to get six to nine months of leasing for four additional 53-foot semi-reefer trailers. That allows us to both heat and cool during the season.
Good. And then also, can you, just for my information, give an example of some of these in-the-middle organizations that you're serving?
So we serve organizations like the Douglas County Community Emergency Natural Disaster Recovery Group. We support them. We support folks, different types, churches in North Omaha, South Omaha, around the community. We also serve school counselors that come up and pick from us, and then also small community groups. There's an organization that we drop about 10,000 pounds of emergency, emergency food at the end of a driveway, and then the community distributes that 10 pounds, and we do that on a weekly basis. So it's all these folks who don't access traditionally, people who don't have transportation, who can't access via traditional food banks and food pantries, walk-up traffic, things like that. It's all these smaller groups who typically do not qualify or not serve by larger pantries or food banks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I heard Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I was just gonna, second the motion that was made.
Is seconded.
I think it's a great idea, and we should do it.
Okay, looking in. Seeing nothing.
Mr. Chair-
Sorry, Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to take the time to thank Mr. Fripp for not only his service to our country, but service to this program. I did spend some time with him after hours on the phone last night, and I so appreciate you taking the time to explain this, as well as Mr. James Wright from Congressman Bacon's office, and Brian Barks from the Food Bank. I understand a whole lot more about what you're actually doing and requesting. And so, again, I just want to personally thank you for your time. Thank you for what you're doing, and I will support this request that you've brought before the Board. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There's motion to second. Go, sorry, go ahead, Louise.
3306 Birch Street, Louis Jimenez. Did, I'm sorry, was, is this money for a lease, for four leases?
Greg, you want to answer? You hear?
Yeah, it's a lease, four semi-trailers.
For nine months?
For six to nine months.
Six to nine months. So you're, you're not gonna buy the trailers?
No, this is expansion capacity.
Okay. And I just want to also thank Whispering Roots for tackling the situation in North Omaha. I mean, the USDA food desert, that's a very important thing, so that people can live in the city. And I think, it was nice to see a face now, to the name.
I remember you.
Yeah, all, all credit goes to you for your history and your organizing. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, could, could I ask one more, or not ask, but just comment? When I talked to Mr. Fripp last night, I did ask if this was a program that serviced the entire county, not just the Omaha area, and he said he did. And so I would like to work with Mr. Fripp to get the word out about this program into the Waterloo Valley, Bennington areas, so in the western part of the county, so they know about the program, because they have needs as well.
Absolutely. That's something we can make happen next week, or tomorrow, if they wanted a delivery.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Seeing nothing, I'd ask for a vote internally, and for the clerk to call, roll call online.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, six to zero. Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, Morgan, voting virtually. All other Commissioners present, voting in person.
Okay. Item Four, there's been a request to hold Item Four over, so we're gonna pull that from this week's agenda and go to Item C under Child and Youth Services. We'll take One and Two together. Items One are approved an internal agreement with the Douglas County to mutually house juveniles for an 18-month term, effectively, effective July 1, 2020, through December 31, 2021. And Item Two is approval in local agreement with Sarpy County to mutually hold juveniles for an 18-month term, effective July 1, 2020, through December 31, 2021. Is there a motion and a second to approve Items One and Two?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fran, second by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Seeing no questions internally. Seeing none out.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
And I don't know if Mr. LaFleur is here, but just for the public's knowledge, this is a, a couple of inner-local agreements with Douglas County to mutually house juveniles for an 18-month term, effective during that period. And could you, is Mr. LaFleur here? Yes, thank you. Are these, are these juveniles in Douglas County? Juvenile justice system, somebody else's juvenile justice system? Who are these kids?
Well, it's a good question. Mark LaFleur, Douglas County Youth Center.
Well, I pulled the mic up, I think you know, I don't know if you're tracking good.
Okay. Over the years, Sarpy and Douglas County has partnered with regards to the detention of youth. And moving forward, we just want to make sure that, that we're, we're still having that relationship. It, it's been working fantastic. Sarpy has been an excellent partner, and these contracts gives us a chance to keep things moving in the right direction with regards to what the particular needs may be. And, and just to go back a little bit, with regards to, historically, we had sent individuals to Sarpy County for staff secure holding for youth. But since, really, 2014 or 2015, most of the youth in Douglas County has been maintained through probation and facilities in Douglas County. But occasionally, there may be someone that's booked in Douglas County that could be a Sarpy resident that makes it more convenient for them to be housed there.
Thank you. So this is, we could hold Sarpy kids, Sarpy could hold Douglas County kids back and forth, is that right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you.
All righty. There's motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, if you will call the line, uh, vote online, and we'll vote internally.
Sure. Before I do, I just want to note for the public, if anyone was looking at the attachments online, the resolutions, which would be the second page on both attachments, they were flipped around. So before you, the resolutions are correct. It was just online, the, they're very similar items, and the resolutions are a little different. So, what you see for C2, the resolution, is actually C1, and then vice versa. So I just wanted to note that.
Okay.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes, six to zero. Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, Morgan, voting virtually. All other Commissioners present, voting in person.
Thank you. Item Three is our quarterly data report, which is referred to the QRS report from the JDI Coordinator, Ms. Shelley Salter. She's gearing up, Shelley. Michelle Salter, sorry.
Okay, good morning. I am Shelley Salter, and I am the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Coordinator for Douglas County. I work for juvenile probation, and bringing today some information about the fourth quarter of 2020, and then just a little bit about 2020 as a whole. Reminder, I do not have any handouts today. Everything was sent. JDI went paperless last year, and so we said, after the first of the year, I will not be bringing paper. If you need anything, though, or copies, let me know. Okay, reminder also about our data. The data that we're going to see today is pulled for the purposes of JDAI. We use the probation intake information, as we are both myself and the data analyst housed in probation. That is the information we use to populate the report. That's the information that we analyze that is used for this. But always, if you have questions about our work, or any of our kids, contact us. We're happy to talk about it whenever. So, we have nine points in the juvenile justice system. These are defined by the Office of Juvenile Justice, Delinquency, and Prevention. And to connect that to Douglas County, when those Title II funds were requested from OJJDP partially to hire a racial and ethnic disparities coordinator, part of his grant is that he was able to choose five system points that we were reporting to show change. So as JDI working groups and a collaborative, working with the county, we decided we will focus on the first five points of the juvenile justice system. Today, I'm going to talk to you about only one, and that is the system point of detention. This is a copy of the Douglas County Juvenile Justice System map. This is not the whole map. There was one sent electronically. Just wanted to point out to everyone what we're looking at today. So up on the left, where it talks about law enforcement contact, this being a place where kids enter the juvenile justice system. When law enforcement has made contact with the youth, and they are ticketed, arrested, and a law enforcement officer decides that this is a youth that they believe needs to be detained, that's a danger to our community, they contact probation intake. And then a probation intake officer employs the risk assessment instrument for the state of Nebraska, and makes the final decision on what is going to happen to the youth that day, when they're presented by law enforcement. They can release the youth home. They can release the youth with an alternative to detention, where they would go home. They could release them to an alternative to detention that might be commonly look like a shelter, or the child could, in fact, be detained. So for today, that is the only point of the juvenile justice system we are talking about. Now, when we look at kids in any of our system, it's always important for us to be doing this through the lens of race equity when we're doing it. And so one of the ways that we do that is- is to start by looking at the total population in any jurisdiction.
One in the dining room here, and one downstairs.
If you can mute on Zoom.
Okay, so looking, and we're gonna kind of focus today, when we look, as we normally do, on our African-American youth. They are the youth that are most disproportionately impacted by our work, and so that's the, that's the population I want you to look at as we go through this funnel. So looking at the total population of Douglas County, about 14% of our kids are African-American. When we go over to the right, that first point in the juvenile justice system, where there's law enforcement contact, 47% of the time that our officers are having contact with kids, it is an African-American youth that they have contact with. When law enforcement has contact with the youth, they don't always call and ask that youth be detained. A lot of times, most times, they're ticketed, released, they go home to their parents. But when law enforcement calls and says, "I have a youth that I think is dangerous to the community, that I would like probation to take a look at, do their work, and tell us if this youth should be detained," 64% of the time, that is happening with our African-American youth. And then when probation officers make that decision on whether or not a child should be detained, 59% of the time, those, those children are African-American kids. It is important here that we really understand this part in Douglas County as we move through our other system points to locate data. This is how we start to say, this is an area where there are disparities. This is an area we want to look at to see if there's any change that could be made to make our outcomes look a little different. So in the fourth quarter of 2020, this is kind of just a roll-up of years. So the top graph that you're seeing is fourth quarter 2019, and then all the quarters in 2020, just showing you the number of total intakes received by probation. So that number has gone down over the years. It continues to do so. When you look at the fourth quarter, the bottom is just fourth quarters of every year, and you'll see that in 2018, our number did go up a bit in the fourth quarter, stayed there in 2019, and has come down again this year. It's important for us to talk about 2020 in all of our systems, in all of our points, and recognize that COVID happened around March. And because of that, we've seen a lot less kids over the end of the year in our system. So, we do have a lot less intakes that we've had in past, but to, to remember to ourselves that a lot of our kids are home. The number one reason kids are arrested is charges that fall under larceny, those thefts and things. So it kind of makes sense that maybe if kids aren't out into the community and they're home from March to, say, September, that you would see those things decline. So received a total of 138 times that the risk assessment instrument was used in Douglas County in this quarter. This chart here just gives you an idea of your risk levels of the kids that we see. So 27 of these kids were released. They scored five or under on our risk assessment instrument. That tells us that these are kids that we should be able to send home, to have supervision by their parents or guardians, that they will return to court to see the judge to move further through their probation orders, or whatever happens when they go to court. We have 50 kids who scored in that range of six to nine. These are the kids that we know we need alternatives to detention for. So those are kids that we know that we would need for the electronic monitors, some tracker services, community coaching. Sometimes an alternative can be for a youth to say, "Hey, you're going home tonight. You don't get to go anywhere until you go to court tomorrow at 2:00, and your parents are going to supervise." We had 14 kids who scored in what is called the staff-secure level. Now, the state of Nebraska is looking at our risk assessment instrument again now. We no longer have staff-secure detention in Douglas County. I should have asked Mark before he walked away. I'd say that's been gone about a year and a half, and two years. So the information about Sarpy is helpful. So these are those kids who we know are a higher risk to our community. They need some advanced services that relate to the supervision of the community, but they do not necessarily need to be detained in a secure facility. And then we had 45 youth who scored 12 and above. These are the kids that we know need to be detained. These are the kids that we know are posing risk to our community. These are the kids that we want to see the judge and to allow our court process to work. And then we have sometimes kids who don't get the benefit of that risk assessment instrument. And that happened 12 times in the- And that happened 12 times in the last quarter. 10 of the kids detained without receiving the benefit of the risk assessment instrument. Seven were because of court orders. Two were because of the loss of an alternative to detention, which is the home program. When youth fail that program, they can be detained. And then one youth who had a warrant calling for detention when the youth returned. And then we had two kids who were automatically helped. So when kids run away from other states, simply being a runaway is not enough for us to detain kids in Nebraska. However, if they have a warrant in another state, we do detain out of state runaways with a warrant from another state so that they can return home, and that happened twice. The chart underneath is just the same information of how kids, that darker blue line is the total youth that came in in the quarter. The line is the middle is the youth detained. And then the final line down at the bottom that you really can't see on any of them because it only happens 12 times is those kids who did not get the risk assessment instrument. Again, another way for to look at this by race to see that predominantly our African American youth are the youth that we're talking about when we're thinking alternatives or strategies that we need to think in that lens of culture, responding to culture and who the right providers of those services might be. The average daily population of this quarter, this is really important to understand. I know we have some new people. So when I talk about the average daily population of the Douglas County Youth Center, I'm talking to you about kids that are there on juvenile charges. There are kids who are in the youth center on adult charges. As far as strategies are concerned for those kids, we look to the Douglas County Juvenile Justice Administrator, Kim Havakati. That would be her population of kids that she would work to find strategies and different things for kids for. So the average daily population of kids on juvenile charges was 41.7 and our average length of stay 50 days. So to look at the risk assessment instrument, we like to follow the instrument. Part of what the state is doing is to try to validate that tool. And part of being able to do that is for us to be using it appropriately. Having said that, there are times when kids are overridden based on what the tool is recommending and then they are detained. We had eight kids in this quarter that were pre-adjudicated kids. Four were overridden and detained due to a risk to the community that involved a gun. Three were detained because of a risk to the community that was not a gun and one is a court order. For probation youth, which is always our larger population on the overrides, we had 29 kids. And you can read all the different reasons. The ones that I really want to point out to you today are the 12 documented failure to appear. The three risk to community, not a gun, and the five risk to community with a gun. Those are kind of our target populations for this year. The failure to appear is somewhat new in Douglas County for us to see kids detained for that reason. We had a law change that changed the purpose of detention in Nebraska indicating that youth can only be detained if they are a threat to the safety of persons in the community or if they have documented willful failures to appear to court. And so 12 times we saw that happen in this quarter. That's a population that's special to us that we're going to really try to dig into this year to see what it is those kids need. And again, by race, again, another place for us to ask, why would it be that black and Hispanic kids are overridden more often than other kids? So for 2020, we're going to do the same thing here. We always start here. It's so important when talking about disparity. Looking again at our total population of youth, 14% throughout the year when law enforcement had contact with our kids, 46% of the time, it was African American youth. When law enforcement felt those were kids that needed to be detained, 60% of the time, they were African American kids we were being called about. And 59% of the time, the kids being detained are African American youth in Douglas County. Again, the Douglas County System Map reminder, I'm looking under the law enforcement section of this on the left, only at that intake decision for this point of the juvenile justice system. So for the year in 2020, 634 kids were given the risk assessment instrument. 303 of those kids were detained, 111 were released. 212 were released with conditions. Those would be those alternatives. And 74 kids were not screened. That means they were detained outside of what the statutory process is of going through probation intake. And then here, this is a look at our whole year of kids that come in. I don't know, I'm not going to try to move that Zoom thing, but under there, the top numbers in blue is the total. Red is the youth has they were detained. And green is the youth who did not get the risk assessment. Again, looking at this to try to begin understanding what is it with our African American youth that's presenting them to us more often, that's finding them more likely to be detained, that is seeing these kids detained without the benefit of a risk assessment instrument. It's through this that we could start to look through the lens of race inequity to find solutions for these youth. The average daily population for 2020, and so I'm going to go back and say that again. I'm talking to you about kids on juvenile charges. For the year, our average daily population of those kids was 44. There are about 28 kids a day that are in the Douglas County Youth Center on adult charges for a total of about 73 kids per day in 2020. We received a total of 86 times kids were detained due to warrants. That was one of our target populations. We had 33 kids who violated probation and were detained. Average length of stay for the whole year for all the kids is 48 days. And on our youth of color, excuse that, 3,030, that is 303. 84% of the kids detained in the year are youth of color. That number has increased over my time as JDI Coordinator, although the total number of kids is less. Our percentage of kids of color continues to increase. This is common across the country as jurisdictions drill down on their detention populations that they see their rate of kids of color increase. So we're not unusual in that, but it's not an excuse for us to figure out why that is and what we can do about it. Technical violations. So Commissioner Boyle, Mike Boyle noticed this. Last year, one time in a child and youth meeting, it's an important indicator for us. A lot of times when we talk about reform in all of our systems, you'll hear people say flipping the pyramid. In child welfare years ago, we tried flipping the pyramid of kids being out of their homes to staying in their homes or with relatives. So with juvenile justice and detention in Douglas County, one of the things that we noticed years ago is that 61% of our kids were being detained on a technical violation of some term of their probation or an alternative or some service that they were in and not committing new offenses. So in 2016, 61% of our detained kids were detained because of a technical violation. And last year, that number is 39. This is important number for us. We're already working with these kids. We need to be prepared when they fail in the programs that we send them and have a plan B to keep kids home doing the services that they need. So this is a good indicator that is not the daily population. I know that's the number people are most interested in. But this is a good indicator of how our work is doing as a whole. And then this slide, I know it's a lot, so I'm just going to help everybody focus on what it is I want you to see here. So way over to the right is under the me up there. I'm going to try to move it Karen. I'm sorry if I do something bad when I do it. All right. So this is all the kids that we saw last year come in to probation intake through Douglas County. So what we look at when we look at this for the purpose of JDI is first we start way to the right where it talks about kids who were not screened. 74 times kids were detained without the benefit of that risk assessment instrument, an objective tool to help us to make sure that we're looking at kids correctly and not adding our biases in. And 74 times kids were detained without that. 36 of those being African American and 20 being Hispanic. That's a cause for concern for all of us in the JDI effort as to why this would be happening and what work we could do there to make sure that kids aren't screened outside of our process. And then I'll read it to you starting from the right so that everyone is aware, but we're going to focus on the next highlighted one. The auto holds. These are the kids that I was talking about. They're out of state runaways with warrants. So over the course of the year, eight kids were detained for that reason. Under released just tells you how many kids scored, what their scores were and that they were released. As we go down, we can see them by race. The middle section is kids who were released to those alternatives to detention. And then to the left, that is also highlighted is youth who are detained. For the purposes of JDI, we look under those low and medium scoring youth, which is like 114 if I'm adding correctly. And those would be the kids that are our targets. If they're scoring low and medium, but we're detaining them, what is the community safety question? What service is needed that would let us all feel comfortable to allow these youth to go home? So this is kind of what our report looks like every month. These are the areas that we look in. Paying particular attention to this, that it shows us by race and ethnicity, how kids are being detained so that we have to make sure that our strategies follow that too, that we're giving kids a culturally responsive service when they're being released. And then here, there's a lot of discussion in Douglas County about kids with guns. In 2020, I just wanted to bring this to show, if you look under felony weapons, 76 times kids were presented to probation intake for a charge of felony weapons and 73 times those kids were detained. There are three kids in this year who were not detained with a felony weapons charge. And I just remind everyone that there is a story with every child. This is another thing that we can look at that tells us where kids are, what kind of crimes kids are committing. So when we're looking at public safety, what would our strategy have to include to mitigate what the safety to the community is based on the offenses that the kids have? So I just wanted to point that out that there's a lot of discussion about this. 76 times kids were actually charged with felony weapons. 73 times they were detained last year. Again, average daily population of kids on juvenile charges for the year, 44, adult 28, total about 73. And then this is over just the last couple of years, the green. And this is a really important discussion right now for Douglas County too, particularly with the addition of the juvenile justice administrator. So I started, I think, five or six years ago and 79 was the average daily population of kids in 2017. So on its face, I see that it says for 2020, the average daily population is 72.9. It does not appear to be a huge change looking at it. The issue that we're having in Douglas County is that in 2017, our average daily population of kids on juvenile charges was 66.4. Our average daily population for those kids now is 44. So we have done well on the parts that were the kids with juvenile charges, the parts that are under JDI, the parts that are probation, trying to make sure that their kids aren't coming back for technical violations. But what we've noticed over this same period of time is that our kids on adult charges are increasing, making the whole number of the youth center appear to be unchanged. There's no relationship known to me as to why a kid would be charged with a juvenile charge and then all of a sudden be charged with an adult crime. There's definitions. There's a reason that these charges are this way. And so this is kind of for Kim and her team to look in and find out, who are these kids? Why have our youth on adult charges increased in this manner? Are they staying in adult court? Are kids being charged as adults and more likely coming back to juvenile? Would that be something that we could look at to try to prevent in the first place to give kids more space to receive the rehabilitation that they need? So this is just to show you over the last couple of years, what those two populations look like. I do not know of other jurisdictions where this has happened. Like I said, when we talk about kids of color in a detention system, as the big numbers go down, we see the rate of kids of color go up. I don't know about this in other jurisdictions, but it is certainly what's happening in Douglas County. So key concepts for us for 2021, that's system map. So you all got a copy of the system map in your emails and then went out with the notice of the meeting. But I want to see if I can just go back real quick because the thing that's going to be important for us this year is everywhere you see a bubble or a line, we need to know what's going on. We only look at information from law enforcement contact and what probation intake is doing. We need to know, are their parents and guardians still bringing their kids to our juvenile justice system and saying that I need help and there's no other way for me to do it? How are the kids coming in through school? When they do, what happens? How long does it take from a police officer's hand to a county attorney decision? So for 2020, one of our goals of our JDI data team is exactly that. These partners sit at our tables. And so how can we populate these so we can see other areas besides detention that we could use some strategies throughout our system? So the system map and the data is going to be pretty key this year for us moving forward. Accountability, talking to each other, holding each other accountable. Is your data on the map? Have you supplied what we need to start looking for strategies for our kids? That's going to be a big theme for 2021 for us. And then the relationship between racial, ethnic disparities, data and the other working groups. That'll be important this year too, to understand that we do have a case processing subcommittee and an alternatives to detention subcommittee and a family subcommittee and a JDI steering committee. But that our red committee, our racial and ethnic disparities group, is the committee that runs through all. And so when strategies and decisions are being made, that we go to them and ask, what are we forgetting here? Will this negatively impact kids of color? Help us with what you know to tell us what we're missing. And then for our data team to continue to populate that map and give the data to the working groups to show them what we have so we can find our other areas of concern. 72 is not a lot of youth for us to consider for the year as our average daily population in the youth center. I think for Kim Havakati and myself, it would be what a caseload looks like for somebody, one of our frontline staff. This should not be something that we can't get through in the next year. So our targets. Our targets for JDI have been, for the time that I have been here, warrants and then the racial and ethnic disparities. This year, the warrants are really about the kids failing to appear and what those kids need. We find that they have sometimes long lengths of stay. And so the question would be if it's so important when a youth fails to appear that we need to detain them for the purposes of court. We need to be ready for that. Get them into services, get them back into their homes and doing what they need to. And so our case processing this year will be really important. Areas of special attention, we have noticed our number of kids who are current state wards going up a little bit. Not a lot in our data. It's an unusual number. Sometimes it's 12%, sometimes it's 30%. But we have noticed a bit of an uptick in these kids, so we want to keep our eye on that. They would have special needs. We know these are kids that are victims of abuse neglect. We know how victimology relates to a kid's behavior. So case processing reform, moving up the times that our kids are in the system. Can we do this more efficiently? Alternatives to detention. Can we get more responsive in our alternatives? Can we expand to smaller community organizations that families might be more comfortable with? And then community engagement. This one seems to me that it should be so easy and it has been so hard in the last six years for us to figure out a way to engage our community. So I think that with COVID, one of the good things is the idea that people are okay with Facebook Lives and Zooms and WebExes. So doing some of that through our red coordinator and our committees to get the community engaged in our work. And then JDI celebrated 10 years in Douglas County last week, February 16th, I believe, is the date that the board officially began as a JDI site 10 years ago. And so just wanted to show you in 2007, the average daily population of the Douglas County Youth Center was 167. In 2010, that number was 129. And then this year, and this is for all the youth, it is 72.9. That's it.
Thank you, Shelley. I'll let Karen put the full screen back up here. Mike, did I see Anna?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fran.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. And Michelle, great, very good presentation, good information. Thank you. You had, one of the slides, I don't remember which one it was. I should have wrote the number of the slide down. There were scores talking about that were essentially being used to identify risk, risk of reoffending. One of the things that I was curious about, and maybe this was alluded to in a post-slide or a slide after that. For those particular scores, if you wouldn't mind educating me a little bit, are the organizations coming up with those risk metrics? Are they schools? Are they, is it the judiciary? Is it the county attorney's office? Is it law enforcement? Is it probation? Is it all of the above, that type of thing?
Well, I'll tell you, the risk assessment instrument itself is a statewide tool. So the state developed it through state probation.
Right. You did mention that, but I wasn't sure where they grabbed their numbers, right?
They say to get.
The state. So in other words.
Oh, how they made the tool?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Maybe we don't know for sure.
Yeah, we do. And I could be happy to come back next time and give you more information. I have a ton that I could send you. But quickly, briefly, to tell you that the state probation worked with, and his name is escaping me, David Steinkhaus, I believe it is, but I will get it for you and send it to you. And he is responsible for making these. And he is responsible for making these other places too. The questions that we have are questions that relate only to what is the current offense of the youth? What is their current, how are they currently involved in the system? They might be a child who already has a charge that they've been adjudicated on. It might be a kid who's waiting on one. Might be someone who's never been involved before. So it goes through just that. And then it'll also ask for some mitigating and aggravating at the end. Do you go to school every day? Do you have a job? Is your first arrest before the age of 16 or after? Kids arrested before 16 have a higher likelihood of being arrested again. So there are evidence-based questions in there. There are no questions about where the kids live, which is important to us when we're looking at race and ethnicity. Super quick answer, but I'd be happy to send you the real details on how it was developed.
No, thank you, Michelle. And I look forward to continuing this dialogue offline. I mean, just, we should probably talk a little bit, so you could educate me on some more stuff. But one other question, if you don't mind, Commissioner. There was another slide where we were specifically talking, and there may be actually a couple of them, talking about law enforcement contact. So in 2020, I may have missed the numbers, but what percentage of the contact, and maybe this is drilling down too deep at the moment, what percentage of the contact is broken down by 911 call compared to an actual patrol engagement? So, so if a, well, I think you get the point. I mean, do we have numbers broken down in that manner, and am I missing?
I can tell you, the law enforcement contact information that we received through dot com was created for the data committee that Commissioner Rogers chairs with Joyce Suter. That information is youth under the age of 18. A citation was issued. They are not a victim. It is not simple, well, child checks, it's not general 911 calls. It is actual contact between law enforcement, someone under the age of 18, where a citation was written and they are not the victim. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. I'm just curious, and again, we can take this offline too, but I'm curious as to what, I hear, and they're not buzzwords, they're real. I hear disproportionate minority contact all the time, and I've heard it for the last 20 years of my life. And what I'm trying to figure out, is I'm trying to drill a little deeper, and we're at our infancy here, but my feeling is that the 911, the initial 911 contact is pretty important in that regard. So, and I'll visit with Commissioner Rogers and others on the board as well. I'm just trying to figure out where that metric lies in the information that you've distributed to us, right? So, and maybe it's there somewhere, just not in those slides. And I can, I can follow up later on that stuff, like I said. But anyway, I think what you've said does help, and I'm trying to drill a little deeper, that's all.
Yeah, no, please do, because I'm not quite understanding what you're asking, so I'm curious. So please, we should find out if it's a question.
Thank you, thank you very much, Michelle. Thanks, Commissioner Rogers.
Yeah, and Commissioner Fran, I think there's a conversation that you, Kim, and I can probably have with Abby, because your state legislative experience probably would be helpful here, because I know we, and there'll probably be a point that you get the board that can need some help, just so the board's in unity in regards to some data requests that we've been making. And there's some barriers there that we can get through to try to tie some of those dots together, hopefully. So I'd definitely be talking to you about it. Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
I just have a question too. Why is it that, it seems that with the risk adjustment, risk adjustment tool, that is the thing that kind of gets a child in and out of detention or whatever? They're just positioned quicker. Why are some kids not, why are they not getting that?
Yeah, mostly the reason why, there's kind of two big reasons. Well, not two big reasons, I guess the numbers are wildly different, so one is not as big as the other, sorry. Court orders. Kids who go into a courtroom and for whatever reason the judge says, that's it, you're being detained today. So that would be the number one reason. Another is a loss of an alternative to detention. In Douglas County, that is limited only to the home program. We have no alternatives to detention who are allowed to detain. Law enforcement doesn't detain. Probation intake does, but we do have one alternative to detention program, which is the home program, that has always been allowed to detain if youth violate their program. So that's kind of our second one.
And is it fair to say we're working on that because we control that one?
Absolutely. It's more than fair to say that. I know Megan Heffley and her team with Kim have made so many changes in this, and a lot of it just has to do with that report, youth engagement, positive youth development, those kinds of trainings that help you understand kids and families a little better.
And to tie that down a little bit more, Commissioner Boyle, the grant that we've got authority to use in a different way, I hope is to, in two to three months or so, have that ready to unveil with some supportive services on home, so we can work on that, that piece of it. You good?
Yep, thanks.
Any questions on Zoom? I see Commissioner Kavanaugh, you're on the clock.
Thank you. And thanks for this report. I think every time you come before us, I quiz you a little bit on the following, which is the stark contrast between the populations in our community and the kids that are locked up in our community. So just to kind of recap, make sure I've got this right. The African-American and Hispanic percentages in our community are 32% and the Caucasian whites are 63%. The contacts with law enforcement among those juvenile communities are 47% African-American, 17% Hispanic, or 64% of the total, and 33% Caucasian white. And then those kids that are locked up, 59% African-American, 18% Hispanic, 77% versus 18% Caucasian white. So basically, from the categories represented in our population to the categories represented in our incarcerated youth population, there's a total flip. Is that basically correct?
Yes.
Okay. That also goes to the question of the average daily population, because that indicates that this number that we're dealing with, and this is important particularly for our newer colleagues to understand, of locked up kids is 72.9. The number that you gave us for the locked up kids for juvenile purposes is a subset of the locked up kids today is 72.9, average daily population of our youth center, right?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the average length of stay for that population, you have at 48 days. Does that include both the kids locked up for juvenile charges and the kids locked up for adult charges?
I gotta see which slide you're looking at. Oh, it's this one here, the 48 days. So on the 2020 year in review, I can't, now I can't see you, Commissioner. That is actually the all the kids on that one.
Okay, so the 48 days is the whole population?
Correct.
Okay. And then what we're seeing, according to the information you're giving us, is an increase in the minority population of kids locked up and an increase of kids locked up for adult charges. Is that right? Both of those are on the upswing?
Correct.
You know, this is really good information, and I appreciate you bringing it to us in this form. One thing that might be additionally good to see, and you do it on the breakout between kids locked up for juvenile charges and kids locked up for adult charges, is a look back on all of these numbers. So, you know, when we're saying we're not making progress on the misrepresentation, over-representation of minority kids locked up, we're actually going backwards. That's increasing. We could see that as well relative to this shift from juvenile charges to adult charges, and then probably start asking those questions, because that's the discretion of the prosecutor, the county attorney's office. And, you know, going back to the kids arrested question, do the same. A look back, because that's a question for the law enforcement, the police officers on the street. Why are we getting these disproportionate numbers? And why are we getting now this flip? I don't know the answer to that question, do you?
I could, not on the adult charges. On the youth of color, I can tell you that that is generally how it works. As the total big numbers go down, the population of kids of color by percentage does increase. And that is, and we've talked about this, I know, many times, and that is the everything. That is the implicit bias. Those are the things that I know as a white person, or if you were to say gang member, what image pops in my head when we have all these discussions about guns? What are people thinking? There's so much more into that. But it is common across JDI sites, and there are over 300. As that number goes down, youth of color increases.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, let me hold you there, that's your time. Let me see if there's some other questions. If not, I'll go back to you if you want to continue. Are there any other questions out there? Commissioner Kavanaugh, if you want to continue.
Thank you. Yes, these are very, very key questions as we're going forward, because, you know, they play into the new kids jail that's being constructed downtown, not having capacity for the average daily population that is in our youth center currently, and therefore not being really able to be certified by the folks that have to give the certification for that facility to open. So going back in time is a real good predictor, I think, of where we're going. This 72.9 kids locked up number, going back five years or 10 years, is really important for us projecting forward. Some plan is going to have to be put in place to get a 72.9% population into a facility that has, I think, 46 beds, something like that. So if you could supply us with those kind of look backs, and I'm not saying, you know, make a special report or anything, but it should be, I believe, in your records to easily comply, you know, one-page graph that shows average daily population going back of the entire population, average length of stay going back of the entire population, and racial disparity going back. And I don't know how far we can go back on that. I remember asking the corrections people to include that in the corrections report going forward. They hadn't been compiling that going back. So those three metrics, I think, and maybe a fourth one would be kids who are, you know, in the population at one percentage, in a law enforcement contact at another percentage, and incarcerated at a third percentage. Because that flip is really the, you know, the meat of the matter. But I want to thank you for these reports. You're kind of the canary in the coal mine when it comes to letting us know where we're at and what if any progress or not progress is being made. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me know for the importance, let me know for the importance of the use of language. And I think, I'll just reiterate that, just like in an adult, we've not referred to people as ex-cons or ex-offenders. We're not referring to them as returning citizens because of the implicit power of language. So in juvenile, when we say that a child's brain is not developed to 25, I think we should be careful in the language that we use when we say kids jail. It's an attentive center or a holding facility. And I'll just try to reiterate that, that language is very important, particularly in the world of juvenile. With that said, let me just make another correction for the record, that the facility is going to be 64 beds, not 46. And thank you. Any questions out there, anymore? Shelley, thank you. Let me note for the board again, right now at this point, that we are working on trying to get some enhanced detail language from certain points in the system, particularly for this. And the board's will might be called upon to try to influence that data gathering at some point. So I want to put the board on record with that. That's something that we're constantly trying to do and to point out the points in the system that need to be paid attention. So thank you all for that. With that, we'll go on to item G, human resource. The weekly personnel report is as submitted. And then we'll go to item two, which is legislative items and some items that are there presented for us. Marcos, I don't know if you want to come to the mic just in case, if you're there, just in case there's some answers. But we got, I mean, questions, sorry. We have one, two, three, four, five, six bills presented before us to take action on. We'll go first to LB 108, change provisions relating to the supplemental nutrition assistance program. Senator McCallister Bill, and Marcos, you recommended that we take a pro position on this?
Yeah, Marcus Sainmartin, Douglas County legislation. Commissioner, LB 108, 118, and 451 are all bills that were brought to our attention from Commissioner Boyle. And yes, I can give a brief background on them. I know I provided summaries to the whole board.
Well, no, let me just say, I'll just, I'm looking around the room. Is it the will of the board to take these separately or to take them as a whole? Commissioner Fran, I'm looking at you, you're the canary here, I know.
Can I, look, I'm kind of on record and I've already communicated my concern. I get the feeling we're almost, we're almost throwing, and I feel bad for Marcos, because he's the one that gets leveled with a lot of the research here. He's great at it, but we're keeping him really busy. I'm worried about white noise. I'm worried, Commissioners, about what we're, I've said this to almost each of you individually, that I'm worried about what they're even listening to at this point down there. I don't have to separate these out, Commissioner Rogers. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on the whole package.
Okay.
So thank you.
Got it. I'm looking at the screen. Are our commissioners fine? We're taking these, or we want them separated out? Okay. Then is there a motion to take the recommendation of the bill submitted by Commissioner Boyle, LB 108, LB 118, LB 451, LB 663? Is there a motion to approve?
And 637. You're taking them all?
Sorry, and which one? Oh, sorry, I see, I missed it. 637, sorry.
Yeah. The other two that should be listed on there, it's LB 637. And that bill was brought to our attention by the Health Department, and that is consistent with our November priorities. So that is a bill that we've essentially set ourselves up to support. That's 637. Then 663 is a bill that was brought to our attention from Lancaster. It's one of their priority bills, is my understanding. And so that's why it's also on the list.
Got it. Is there a motion to approve these as a whole?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Maureen Boyle, is there a second?
I'll second it if the chair isn't going to second it in person.
Yeah, thank you. With that, looking in the crowd, is anyone who wants to make comment in the crowd? Larry, please.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I would like to comment before you vote. However, on 118 through 663, I've read the books and also watched the movies called Soylent Green in 1984. Had a college discussion on it way back in about 1968, Brave New World. This smacks of that to me. People need to think about what is going on, what's being passed. And just reading these, it just brings to mind that poor little Edward G. Robinson in Soylent Green, laying in the hospital bed there, and they're going to give him a shot to help him expire peacefully while he watches a beautiful video. And then all the body bags are loaded onto a conveyor belt and dumped up. And then all the body bags are loaded onto a conveyor belt and dumped up into a corn, corn bin style furnace. But also the 1984 movie, where everybody is pretty much dressed the same, hairstyle's the same, discussions are the same, classes are the same, their bedrooms are the same, and they're not even allowed to cohabitate. We are moving towards that in this society, and it's got to stop. So please, go back to being reasonable and commonsensical before you pass things such as this. You have to think forward towards the forest instead of that little tree that's out there bending in the wind. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else in the chamber? Anyone online? There's most in a second. Please vote internally and roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Oh, jeez, I keep forgetting, I was expecting my role.
Motion passes five to one. Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, Morgan voting yes virtually. Commissioner Rogers and Maureen Boyle voting yes in person, and Commissioner Friend voting no in person.
Okay, item B, discussion of action to oppose legislative bills. LB 189, the change provision relating to property tax refunds. It's in the Revenue Committee, Marcos, you want a brief recap?
So commissioners, this LB 189 is on, on your agenda. It was recommended from the HR Committee two weeks ago to oppose this bill. This bill has a provision in it that will, requires the 9% interest to be paid by the county for any property tax refund. So that was, that was the discussion.
Is?
I might comment on that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Morgan, go ahead. Well, wait, Commissioner Morgan, for you, is there a motion and a second to?
Oppose.
Oppose?
Motion to oppose.
Motion by Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Morgan, go ahead.
Well, on this one, I think it's important that, you know, what should happen is legislature, legislature should start to be working to make sure it's not about this interest being paid, but somehow the citizens being able to go to Turk and not wait two or three years to finally get a decision out of Turk. That would be the kind of legislation I'd like to see passed, because it's pretty ridiculous for us to try to pay 9% interest and calculate those numbers. We'll be spending more on staff than we would on the interest amount. So that, and I've talked to Joe Lorenz about that issue. I also want to say that I think that Mike Friend is exactly right. I think we need to be maybe, and Marcos does do a super job and has for some years. I think, you know, we maybe are getting ourselves into too many of the legislative bills and need to really be more cautious on the ones that we are supporting rather than just doing a glut of them. So I do think what he said about white noise is a factor, and that we'll have to be more considerate of in the future.
Okay. Is that a present hand, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And I, I agree with what PJ and Mike have said about the futility of this. I can assure you, as I talk to senators all the time, they don't pay any attention to this. And so, you know, it's a nice statement of intent, but that's all it is, and it has limited impact, as anybody who knows the legislature can tell you, on what actually happens down there. Marcos, this bill calls for a 9% interest rate to be paid by, say, the county to people who prevail in a Turk appeal, is that correct?
So Commissioner, two, two separate items. This, this bill before you, this LB 189, requires a 9% interest to be paid on any property tax refund that the treasurer's office would have to refund to an individual. There's a separate bill that relates to Turk. Now, essentially, in effect, yes, it would apply to Turk, it would apply to other, you know, personal property, whatever, whatever case would come up where there's a, where there is a tax refund to be paid. So yes, yes, to answer your question, yes, in effect, that's the effect of it.
Okay, so each bill has a fiscal note, and I can't bring this up on my screen, but could you tell us what the fiscal note says on this bill? Because that'll tell us the perceived impact on local government if this bill became law.
So in working with John Ewing, I have turned in a fiscal note on this bill that we, we, it was, it was somewhat hard to ballpark it, I'll have to, I don't have the number off the top of my head. We did turn in a note that was going to be detrimental, that reflects a detrimental impact to Douglas County, and should be to all counties essentially. But I can show you the state's overall fiscal note if you want me to post that somehow. But I, but I don't have it with me. It's, it's, it's on the legislative site. The state's overall fiscal note.
I understand. I'm, you know, interested in the fiscal impact on Douglas County. So what was the fiscal impact on Douglas County?
Chair, can, will you give me a minute to grab my laptop?
Hey, Chris. Is this bill out of committee?
I don't think so, but I'm not sure. Marcos, is this bill out of committee?
I know, this bill is still on the Revenue Committee.
Marcos, while you looked that up, I would just point out that, you know, every day that goes by that the bill does not come out of committee reduces the chances of the bill passing. Also, if the bill is not prioritized, it has very, very little chance of even getting to the floor. So, you know, we may be taking position on bills that are dead. That's just procedurally a reality, as, as Commissioner Friend can tell you. That happens to most bills every session. And so we have no idea what the potential for LB 189 or any of these other bills to actually pass based on the information in front of us. I guess, Marcos, if you, if you can't get it, could you ballpark the number? Was it a significant number?
What we submitted to the state was a, yes, it would be a significant detrimental impact. And then John, John Ewing worked with DotCom a little, after we had already submitted our data, to come up with an estimate from DotCom, because they would have to essentially retool some of their systems to, to provide for this calculation and everything. And that's the information I'm looking for. Commissioner, I'm happy to follow up with you. I all, you know, I can look back in those emails from Dotcom, but, but I did not send a follow-up note to the state, as the hearing had already passed, and we had already sent our initial, you know, detrimental impact statement to the state.
Sure. And, you know, as, as far as this goes, the testimony at the committee, did that include testimony from John Ewing or NACO? Or can you tell us what the testimony at the committee was in terms of pro, anti, neutral?
Commissioner, I can't, not off the top of my head. And we, we did not take a position on this before the hearing, so Douglas County was not there to oppose.
Okay, so how does this come up at this late date, though?
It was considered by the HR Committee.
Got one minute, Commissioner.
Two weeks ago, and it's now before the board currently.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to remind folks that it's not Marcos who brings this stuff to us out of, because Marcos wants to. Marcos takes direction from commissioners that want bills looked at, the detail given, and then brought to the HR Committee or eventually this board for positions. And so he's taken the direction from commissioners that have asked him to give the background on these and bring them to the board for support or oppose.
That is correct. And Commissioner, to answer your question quick, and Senator Hare had, had shown me to the direction to look. You know, the state has turned in no fiscal impact to the state on this bill. The only other group that has submitted something is the Lancaster Treasurer. And what has posted from them, there must be a mistake with this, because they've just submitted a blank, a blank fiscal note. So, but what, what was submitted from the state agency itself, the Department of Revenue, was no fiscal impact to the state itself.
Okay, does our submission appear on that same site that you're looking at?
What has been updated on the legislative side is my statement is, is not reflected on this. And this, and this can happen to when a committee maybe provided information, and it's not updated yet on the state's online website, or, you know, or various, various situations like that, so.
So our submission is not reflected like Lancaster County says?
Not on the link that's currently live on their website. But, but I can, I can definitely follow up with the fiscal office to see if, see where it's at, if they're going to update it on the website or not. I mean, and I have had that happen before, and they've said, yep, you're right, it's pending, or whatever, you know, we will, we will get it uploaded. Yeah.
Right, and when you get that information, could you please forward it to us? Thanks.
Sure, I, I will send to you what, what DotCom's estimate was. It was after the hearing date, and it was after what I had already submitted, so.
Yeah, if you could get both of them to us, that'd be fine, thank you.
Okay.
There's, there's, okay, Commissioner Borgeson?
Well, I think because there's additional information that folks are asking for, that I would ask that we just lay this one over until next week.
Okay. Then I'll, there's most in a second, I'll just ask for unanimous consent to take that off, and we'll just leave it alone. Okay, with that, I don't know of any other legislative.
So the motion by Maureen, Commissioner Maureen Boyle and Commissioner Morgan.
Rescinded it, so we're just gonna leave it alone.
All right.
Is that a hand, Commissioner Friend?
No, no, I was pointing at Dan.
Item C, there is no other legislative items that I know of. We do have a need for executive session for the purpose of litigation, legal advice, and contract negotiations. Is there a motion to go into legislate, I mean, executive session?
Motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Maureen Boyle, is that a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Friend. Again, we are going into executive session for litigation, legal advice, and contract negotiations. As of my watch now, it is 11:42. To get set up and everything, we will begin exec session at 11:50. Okay, roll call and vote.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioners Borgeson, Kavanaugh, Morgan voting virtually, the rest of the commissioners present voting in person.